I'd like to welcome you to the January 22 meeting of the San Carlos City Council and Redevelopment Agency. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on our agenda, I'd consider any changes to the order of agenda. Council members, any change?
We have none.
And the agenda stands as presented. Third item is a great opportunity we have tonight of presenting to five individuals a proclamation for their heroic efforts in saving an individual's life. And I will join the chief, and we will do this together.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just by way quickly of history on this, just after the first of the year, there was an individual at L3 Communications on Industrial Road who suffered a heart attack. And through the selfless efforts of five individuals at that location were pulling AED off the wall, began CPR, gave this individual oxygen, and called 911, did all the things that they needed to do, and saved this person's life. And he's home recovering at this time. So we would like to really recognize these individuals on behalf of their efforts that they did on January 3rd. And they are John Marzillo, if you could come up, please. Richard Zikowski. John Bellino. Shelley Stone. And Cliff Vaughn.
And we have a proclamation for each of you on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of San Carlos. Want to thank you for your hit, the tremendous effort, and being ready and available as needed. Wonderful, let me find the mic here a moment. This is a wonderful reminder of how important preparedness is. You know, we talk a lot about are you qualified for CPR, and can you do this, and can you do that? And many of us think maybe, well, we're not sure, but maybe when the time comes. But your evidence of a group that saw the need, jumped to it, saved a life, and I think we'll all take a lesson from your performance. So thank you very much, and on behalf again of the City Council and the entire city, and I'm sure of all of your workmates and all of your friends, you did a great job. Thank you. I just might add that a part of our discussion tonight will be building community, and a part of building community is preparedness. And a part of preparedness, as you just saw, was being available and ready when the time is needed. So again, we compliment and praise upon these people who were there at the right time. And maybe a lesson for all of us to be ready, be prepared, and be able to assist in a time of an emergency. So with that, we'll move along to Council Communications and Announcements. Brad, do you have anything?
I do. I have a couple of quick things to talk about, just inform everybody on. One thing Mayor Davis asked me to talk a little bit about, and everybody can chime in on this one, is the San Carlos Week of the Family commences this coming Friday. And there's a series of great events that are done throughout the city, starting with a chili cook-off on Friday night, and a family dance, and then there's a Make a Difference Day on Saturday. And then on Sunday, we have a family movie matinee, which I always get involved in every year. This year, we're going to show the film Cars. And I don't know why I picked Cars, but maybe you all do. And of course, then there's a family activity night, and it's just all the way around a family puppet show, Hitler Flight Night, and then commencing with a family concert. Is that right? Did I get them all in? Mayor Davis?
I think you did.
Yes, there's a family dinner, game night, and Rochambeau contest. It's just a fantastic event. It's a great opportunity to get together with the community at some of these different occasions, meet each other, and do things sort of celebrating the great family town that we have here in San Carlos. And I encourage everybody to take part in it. It's usually a good mood and a good time. And then the second announcement I have is, we're helping co-sponsor with San Carlos Educational Foundation, a first-to-worst screening of a documentary film. And it's going to be a free public screening, and it's on February 7th. And it's followed by a really interesting panel, which has got State Senator Joe Semidion, Delane Easton, who was a former California State Superintendent of Public Schools, and Kerry Dubois, from our own San Carlos School District Board, and past San Carlos Educational Foundation President. It promises to be a very engaging film for us all to take a hard look at what's going on in education, and how we can do our best in improving those things. So I encourage you on February 7th to attend that free educational screening. There's information on our website that links to that night as well, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Griselli?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I just have a couple of items. First of all, you notice that our numbers are a bit diminished tonight. Councilmember Dora Diazill. Councilmember Gocod is in Past Christiane. Past Christiane, as many of you know, is our sister city, so-named because we adopted this city after their disaster during the Katrina earthquake. We talk earthquakes here, they talk about hurricanes down there. And so they were substantially demolished during that time. And Matt went down along with Fred Kohler, and Chris, and David Tom to do some work, and to touch base with the locals, and see how else we can continue to support them. So we wish them well, and we will carry on in their absence. Second item would be to recognize that on Sunday, we had a mentoring event in Foster City. This is the second annual countywide mentoring event sponsored by the Mentoring Coalition of San Mateo County. And it's basically a way of recognizing and recruiting mentors throughout the county. And it was a wonderful event, a lot of nice personal testimony went on, and people talking about what great results they've seen from their own mentoring opportunities. And it's also a reminder for us in San Carlos, if you're interested in helping out someone in need, a child perhaps, who needs some extra time and support, we have a Healthy Cities Program, which is part of this effort. And the Healthy Cities Program is one where we team up adults with children in our grade schools, and the tutor typically spends an hour a week working with the student. It's a great opportunity to reach out and to be involved with those who need a bit more time and a little more help. And then finally, on the other end of the spectrum, I just want to let you know that our Assistant Living Center over across in the next block, the Elms, is sponsoring a family support series. This is for families or individuals who are having difficulty regarding the complexity of dementia, as with a loved one. Many of us have gone through that with our parents or relatives. How do you deal with dementia? What's it all about? How does it work? The Elms will sponsor a family support series on the second Tuesday of each month at 7:00 in the evening. It's an opportunity for the community to come together and to be involved, and to share stories and support one another. You don't have to be involved with the Elms, you don't have to have anyone in the Elms. It's just an opportunity for everyone to join and to be a part of that process, if that's a concern to you. So with that, we'll move on to the first item on our agenda for reporting, which is a report on the ad hoc building committee, Community Committee. We set up a process a couple of years ago, and had a number of task forces that met on ways that we could improve the quality of life in San Carlos. And these reports are now beginning to surface. The one you hear now is done by our Building Community Task Force. Later on in the evening, we'll have one by our Natural Resources Task Force. And so I've asked our committee members who are with us tonight, Heidi Schrenka and Jen Muir-Dickson, to step up and give us a little summary about how the committee worked, and the results that we have come up with. Now, you do have a report in your agenda, and that report is from the work of this task force, and I joined that task force in working this through. And so after we hear their presentations, we will have a chat about what's next. Heidi?
I'm Heidi Schrenka.
And I'm Jennifer Muir-Dickson.
So we're going to be presenting a report by the Building Community Task Force. The report was prepared by Pat Bell, who can't be with us tonight, she's ill, and Jennifer and myself, and we had input from Pat Potter, who's another member who's recently joined our group, Matt Taylor from the Youth Advisory Committee, Carol Taylor and Gordon Burton from the Parks and Recs Committee, Barry Weiss, and Donna Diller-Gimpoli from the Parks and Recs Department, and Mayor Davis. So we formed the task force in the fall of 2005, after the workshop on the Building Community. And we spent several months last spring putting together a report, which we presented to the council in June of 2006. And there was a study session in October where we reviewed the report with the council. And we'd like to say that we were very happy to receive such support and encouragement from the council at that time. After that time, we had a couple meetings with Mayor Davis, and we came up with the revised recommendations that we've given you recently. So the areas of the recommendations in our report, we broke them down into six categories. So here we show what the six categories are, and an example of a particular item that was in that category. So under the area of communications, we proposed to hold town hall meetings. And for volunteer opportunities, we were proposing to start a series of Pride Days, probably one in the spring and one in the fall, where volunteers from the community could work together on a project, possibly a cleanup of a park, or something along those lines. The third item, the third area was accountability, and that's sort of on hold right now because you're working on a new system. And the fourth item, which Mayor Davis had mentioned earlier, was preparedness. And one of the things we were proposing was to hold an emergency preparedness fair in the town, possibly in conjunction with a town hall meeting. The fifth area was community building. These were sort of the fun projects. And a little later in this brief report, Jen will be talking about First Night, which is a New Year's Eve celebration that we're really interested and excited about bringing to San Carlos. And finally, there were some long-term projects, which we realize are more capital-intensive and can't necessarily be done anytime soon, but that we would like to keep in mind, such as having a community center with a community theater, an art area for art exhibits, something like that. So now I'll be turning it over to Jen to talk about First Night.
So as the slide says, First Night is a community celebration, and it celebrates the celebration of the new year. And there's an organization, First Night International, that helps you put together this event. It's a community-wide event of visual arts and performing arts, and just all kinds of venues that you can come up with, starting with maybe at like 4:00 in the afternoon of New Year's Eve, and going till midnight, and ending with fireworks or another tradition that we could start on our own. And I would personally love to start this organization. I would love to work on this. We came, I came across one community, Martinez? Do we have that one in here? And this is an example of their First Night flyer and a map that shows where all the venues are. And then this is, there's another example here that shows how the venues are. They're all kind of overlapping. And for the most part, it's open to anybody who purchases a button from the city, and then you can go from venue to venue. And it's not necessarily where you have to sit through the whole thing, it's just a continuing performance that you can come and go as you please. And it's a fun event, and pretty easy to get started from what I understand. So if anybody has any questions.
Just carry on.
So the next steps in our process would be for asking the council to review and modify and approve the recommendations in our report, which we've given you. And then once that's done, we can move forward and expand our membership, and form subcommittees to work on the different projects and the action items. And then we will report back to you bimonthly on our progress. So in the report, if you look at it, the areas, you know, there's a lot of variety in the different things that we're proposing, but the things they have in common is that it's bringing the community together. All these things we're proposing are ways to bring the community together and work together on projects. It's almost not so much specific what the projects are, but just that each one of them would bring people from the community together, bring people from different parts of town together, bring the citizens together with the staff and the council to work on these projects, and using volunteers to help the city do some things that they would like to have done. And we would all be working together to improve our city. And by the use of volunteers, we would hope that that would minimize the staff time and the resources of the city. So we're excited about this, and we hope you are too. And we'd just like to say thanks for having this opportunity to work with you.
Very good, and thank you. I just wanted to mention that it was a real pleasure working with Jen, and Heidi, and Pat, and the other committee members putting this together. And I think that the document fairly represents the items that were originally proposed that we feel doable, that can be done with a minimal cost and a minimal staff, but recognizing also that we really want to accentuate the volunteerism of all this, because we think much of this can be accomplished by volunteers. And so I did discuss with Mark, Vice City Manager, what our next step should be. And we concluded that probably the best thing is to refer this to staff, so they can look at the staff requirements and any money requirements, and then submit it to the council at their retreat the latter part of this month. And the council at that time can budget money or allocate money where it's necessary, and pick out those things that they feel especially attracted to. If they wish to, we can bump something out, but I think they're all well-stated, it's a question of how and when, and what the proper timing is. So that would give us a chance to sit down as a full council and discuss the next steps. So with that in mind, you gentlemen have any questions for Heidi or Jen?
No, I'm just, I'm really glad that you guys are keeping this moving along, and you guys are willing to put all this time into it. And then as soon as we get through staff analysis and council discussion or whatever, it'd be great to get some of the things. Nothing like a deadline to make things happen, right? Get some stuff in the calendar, and we can all start working toward it. So thanks very much for your work.
I also obviously echo the Vice Mayor Lewis and Mayor Davis. I'm the only one that's a councilman tonight. But anyway, I echo their comments. And I look here, and I see a lot of things that aren't going to be very expensive, and I think that's the best part. And I think that we have a great chance, plus the fact that, as Mayor Davis said, we're going to be discussing this at our day-long retreat, which I think is the second, or what, February 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
I think something like that. So it's not going to get lost in shuffle, and not going to be put on a shelf. And that's the best thing about this, I think. So again, just thanks to everybody on the committee and all the hard work they put in. Some of this stuff looks pretty exciting to me, and I've seen it in other places, some of these things, in other cities. And I think we could certainly set up and enhance our city by doing some of them. Thank you.
And thank you, ladies. Job well done. Do we have consensus on the part of the council members to submit this to staff and reconsider it at the retreat?
I do. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Consensus rules, and we'll carry on. Next item is item six, Reports to the Council. We have our second quarterly progress report on meeting council objectives from the Flooding, Land Use, and Creeks Ad Hoc Committee. Do we have a presentation on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brian is not here this evening, but if you can see from the report, we've summarized activities from the Flooding, Land Use, and Creeks Committee. Highlighting their activities for the second quarter include the presentation from the Planning Director to the committee, a review of the Creeks section of the Natural Resources Report, including recommended priorities from that report, and we'll have a chance to discuss that a bit more with the study session this evening. And then the review of the Drainage Master Plan, RFP, and some recommendations that have been reported previously to the City Council on that item. I believe the chair from the committee is here this evening, so if you'd like to add anything to that with respect to the activities and plans for the next quarter, that would be appropriate at this time.
Thank you, Mark. And I also want to say thanks to the other staff members who have been really helpful to us over the past few months.
Give us your name for the record, Lynn.
I will. Glenn Matterman, City of San Carlos. And also, so I was just thanking staff, and also mentioning that we have two members of the group here tonight, Dick and Louise. Do you want to raise your hands? Okay. And if you want to say something afterwards, too. I guess I would just add that the members of this group, and there are eight of us, spend a lot of time on this issue. And as you may have seen in the recommendations that we made regarding the RFP that was voted on last council meeting, and regarding the Natural Resources Task Force report, we think about these issues quite a bit, and hopefully that comes across in our communication. Down the road, I think we'll come back to you with some specifics on how our advice and counsel to you can be most effective, because that's something that a lot of us are thinking about and wondering about. And we want it to be most effective, and we want our time to be meaningfully spent. And so I just say that as kind of an introduction, and we'll be back with some specifics about that, because we have some concerns about it. As far as our charge over the next few months, as you remember, there are four items that you asked us to look at, and those include an ordinance regarding our riparian areas, sedimentation, inter-agency relations, and flooding. And we've taken a look at a few of those. On probably the most important one at the moment, riparian ordinance, we'll have something more to say at the end of the meeting around the Natural Resources Task Force report, because we believe that, well, we begin the discussion about the issue that the riparian ordinance may be most effectively done in the context of the general plan update. And I think you'll hear more about that from your Planning Director, and as I said again, later on in this meeting. So if you have any questions, I or Louise or Dick, if either of you want to comment. Okay. Any questions for us, we'd be glad to answer. Thank you.
Any questions for Lynn?
I'm curious, on the presentation by the Fish and Game Department that's upcoming, any dates on that yet, or when do you think that might happen?
No, we've just given them a call to talk about them coming over. As you may know, they're understaffed in this region, and so they kind of right off the bat said that they don't do a lot of these presentations, but we're still hoping that it happens, and we'll of course let you know as soon as we know, and plan that accordingly.
Yeah. Look forward to hearing from it. Hopefully, Tenny, if it's on the right day and the right time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Well, Lynn, thank you very much, and to your committee, thank you all for the good work you're doing, and we look forward to continued success in this effort.
Okay, thanks.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Now, if you're here to talk about sewer or any other issue that's on the agenda, this is not your time. Your time is coming up soon. But if you're here to talk about something not on the posted agenda, you'll have two minutes to make your presentation to the council, and you'll be able to do that at this time. So are there any public comment for the council at this point? All right, then moving along to item seven, Approval of Consent Calendar. We have consent calendar items that have been, that are considered routine, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to remove for a separate action. Council members, anything to remove?
No.
Staff? Anyone from the public like to remove something for discussion? And we have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve items 7A, B, C, D, and E.
Second? Gocod?
Councilmember Riker-Silly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. This is item number eight. This is a public hearing in consideration of adopting a resolution ratifying sewer rate increases. This is a Proposition 218 public hearing. We have a staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You have before you tonight a public hearing for the purpose of considering any protests to the council's adoption of sewer service rates this past June and July of 2006. Notices have been sent out to all the property owners in the city. This was explained in the staff report required by Proposition 218 and the Supreme Court's interpretation of Proposition 218 after we had adopted our sewer rates, which were in July of 2006. I understand from the city clerk that written protests received at the present time are in the neighborhood of...
Twenty-one letters.
Twenty-one letters. There are approximately 11,000 property owners or households in San Carlos. It literally takes 5,500 or more for a protest. So this is the time, however, for public hearings. So I suggest you open the public hearing, and then close the public hearing, consider any comments and protests, and then proceed with consideration of action with the resolution that's suggested to ratify the rates that were imposed before.
Okay. So at this point, we'll open the public hearing, and this would be the time for anyone to submit a letter of protest if they have one and haven't already submitted it. As Christine mentioned, we have 21 letters at this point. It's also an opportunity to speak on this issue, and I do have one speaker slip from Sam Hersberg. And if anyone else would like to talk on this issue, please come forward and fill out a speaker slip so that we have it for the record. Want me to say that?
Good evening. Sam Hersberg, I live in the L'Oriola Association, east of San Carlos. I just wanted to speak on this issue. We're one of the oldest neighborhoods in the community, and have a lot of older homes, and a lot of older sewer lines, and a lot of older trees right in front of, or on top of, the sewer lines. And I've had problems at my house with a 50-year-old camper tree that had cracked open the lateral to my house, which was the city sewer line, and needed to be replaced. And I can see up and down the streets in my neighborhood that this problem probably exists in almost every house, where it's really becoming a problem. I'm not opposed to this rate increase, but I am concerned about why no sewer lines in our community, the L'Oriola Association, were included in the Capitol... in our community, the L'Oriola Association, were included in the capital improvement project list. The city had planned to make some improvements to the main lines and laterals about five years ago, and then that project was put on hold. And now with the increase in fees, it seems like here's an opportunity, but we're not even on the list. So just wanted to raise that concern to you and question how the projects were chosen. Thank you.
Thank you. Parvise, could you help us out on that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Most of the main lines in L'Oriola Association, those streets have been replaced, and we have the documentation and the map to show the laterals, the list of the three-year project that I'm showing, how many feet of laterals are going to be replaced. Lot of it, I would say, close to, more than 50% of those are in L'Oriola Association, the laterals will be replaced. But we haven't just identified the locations, because this is citywide laterals. I've indicated how many feet, but there are most of them in the L'Oriola Association neighborhoods, especially Clearfield Park, the, the streets north of Holly Street.
Okay. Thank you. I also have a request to speak from Joni, is it?
Johnson.
Johnson. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joni Johnson. Do you need my address?
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay. I just have a brief statement. I would really appreciate a short explanation of why the rates basically will be increased close to 100%. I mean, that's a stiff, you know, I make what, if I'm lucky, a COLA raise of 2% a year. So 100% raise in my taxes, you know, of that area, it seems quite high, and I would really like to know exactly why you're going that route. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Parvise, would you like to help us out on that?
Sure. First of all, the increase for this year is 31%, and over the next three years altogether is 64% and not 100%. And as it was stated in the notice that was made to everybody, the major components of that was the treatment plant, the South Bayside System Authority, which handles the treatment for San Carlos, Belmont, Redwood City, and Menlo Park. They increased the cost to all the agencies by 30%. And one of the major factors for that increase is the plant is 25 years old, and all of a sudden realized the plant has to be replaced within the next few years, because it will not last forever. So the board of directors at the plant decided to start collecting funds from all member agencies, San Carlos included, to put the money in the reserve to start replacing the plant in the future. That was a major component of the increase, and that will go on for next three years. Hopefully, after three years, we would have adequate funds to start planning and replacing the plant.
And the balance of the parvise is to deal with the laterals?
The balance of the, of course, the, the city cooperation of the, and maintenance of the collection system increases every year 3% to 5%. The other part of it is, as I mentioned before, we have many laterals that we have to replace, and approximately 20,000 feet of main lines that have to be replaced in the next three years. And the budget for that has been included in all these increases, and we are presenting actually the program for next three years, which section of the lines are going to be replaced. And as I said, approximately 20,000 feet and many laterals that need a replacement will be replaced.
Thank you. Just to, to follow up on Mr. Johnson's request for information, I do serve as a board member for the SBSA, which is South Bayside Systems Authority, which processes the sewage for Belmont, San Carlos, Redwood City, and Menlo Park. It is an old facility. It doesn't look all that bad, but it's 25 years old. The last broken pipe we had cost $3 million to fix. We have a lateral that runs all the way from Menlo Park through Bear Island, up along Twin Dolphin Drive into the plant, and other, other forest manes, as we call it, connect to that as well. I've been sitting on this board for quite a while, and we've, we felt that we've always had a fair amount of reserves, and that if we had to have a, a real crisis, we'd have to go out and borrow the money. But we've come to the conclusion now that based upon the condition of the, of the laterals, the, the improvements that continue to have to be made, that we need to be more proactive and start to plan for replacements rather than wait for something to break. And, and that's really the bottom line in terms of coming up with a reserve so that we can begin to do some deliberate planning ahead of time. It's, it's unfortunate it comes so, so big. This is a big increase. We didn't want to do it this way. There's some comfort in the fact that our rates have been very low compared to other cities for a long time. Unfortunately, we, we're playing catch-up, and, and now is the time we have to do it. So we regret that it turns out this way, but I think for the good of us all, we're, we're taking the money that we need, and we'll be able to, to maintain a, a facility that's worthy of the cities who operate it and pay for it, and all the customers who, who use it. And so it's, that's the bottom line explanation of, at least part of this, this increase. Any other speakers on, on the, the item? And I'll move to close the public hearing. Second. And again, the clerk has tallied, we have 21 protest votes. That's fewer than needed to, to succeed in the protest, therefore, we can consider the resolution attached as exhibit B. Is there a motion for the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask just a couple of questions? I don't mean to belabor this. No, that's all right. Parvise, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I, I apologize. I should have probably called you earlier today to ask you this, but what percentage, you indicated that we're going to raise the rates, or you aren't, the rates are going to be raised 30%. That will work on the facility and also to help us with our lines that we have to replace. Is there a percentage of that number that you can equate to the percent, to the lines? The half of the 30% or 10%, or 10% of it, or? See where I'm going?
He's, he's doing some quick math.
Apologize.
For, for this fiscal year is approximately, in the vicinity of 18% of it is going to replace the line, which is $1.8 million for this fiscal year. So, and the following years, of course, that percentage goes to almost half.
Are you saying 18% goes to the lines and 12% goes to the plant, or 18% of the 30%?
18% of the 30%.
So about 5% or 6% goes to the lines?
Correct.
And if we wanted to postpone the lines, not saying we should, then that rate increase would drop possibly to 25%?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others? We ready for the resolution? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2007 dash?
Seven.
Seven. Resolution to the, the city council of the city of San Carlos ratifying sewer rate increases. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, but just, and again, I, I don't mean to be, it's easy to grandstand up here, and, and I don't want it to sound like that, but I guess because of my financial background, and again, nothing against the folks that are on the SW, whatever, can never get these acronyms right, the Bayside Authority, but I would hope that in the future and all other stuff, that we would try to, try to go a little bit at a time. I think, I think 5% or 6% a year for a lot of people is palatable in a lot of different areas, and 31% is, and 22%, it's just hard. And I appreciate what's being done, and again, I, I don't mean to grandstand, and I, it's easy to poke holes in, in something that's, that needs to be done, and I don't mean to do that, don't mean to say that. But I just hope in the future that we, we, we can do things on a more moderate basis as opposed to the, the spikes. And this is one of the first things that I've faced in the council in the first year. And so that's why I just wanted to say it now. Maybe you'll be hearing it again next year for something else, but hopefully not. Anyway, second emotion.
And I just want to say, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, because I think there's a sense that the rates have been lowered for a number of years in trying not to increase rates, and now we're faced with?
Right.
Increasing the rates. Fortunately, it's been $23 a month. It's going to, over the course of three years, go to $41 a month. I, I do want to say that, you know, where we, the percentages are high, and they sound quite high, fortunately, in the dollars. They're not, it's not a tremendous number of dollars, even though any, any more money out of our pockets is more money out of our pockets. And, and just for everybody's edification about when we had the proposed budget six, seven months ago, and we had this discussion, councilmember Griselli made that point, and I agree with it wholeheartedly, that as much as we can plan and reserves for as we move forward, so we don't have to get in a situation in a given year where we get kind of a double whammy, where we get, you know, a, a new charge from a certain agency, and then we have to, on top of that, for our maintenance, also add to that percentage, because it's a, it's a tough go. So anyway, again, I echo the comments.
We all feel the same way.
I'm sure we do, and again, I didn't mean to be the, the grandstander on that.
No spikes, if we can help it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. That brings us to item nine, let me find my agenda here, it brings us to item 9A. This is a report on the fire department, its consideration of changes in funding formulas specified in the amended and restated exercise of the joint powers agreement for the Belmont San Carlos Fire Department. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you will recall, the council authorized the board members and the staff to move forward with the new funding formula with the Belmont San Carlos Fire Department, with, with instruction, not formal instruction within the motion, but, but certainly based upon the discussion at the city council, that we would address the issue with respect to unfunded liabilities, and, and the question specifically as to whether or not those unfunded liabilities should be paid for moving forward on a 50-50 basis per the, the existing or old, and old formula, or whether those should be paid forward, moving forward on the new formula that, that has been negotiated. Those discussions occurred at the next regular meeting of the fire board, and, and the board authorized staff to, to research the issue in terms of how or what our options might be for, for addressing that issue on the 50-50 split. And basically, what it comes down to is that a large portion of those unfunded liabilities, that being the, the PERS retirement component, in, in common, nomenclature is paid for moving forward as part of your operating budget. And so there's a certain ease with having those payments made with the new formula that has been discussed. Certainly, though, the, the value of all of the liabilities approaching $18 million is such that from, from San Carlos perspective, the, the formula differentiation is approximately $500,000 or thereabouts. And if the organization should have to pay off those obligations in the near future, the, the formula split would have an extra burden of approximately half a million dollars to the city of San Carlos. And so we're, we're searching for means by which those can be paid off as, with the formula as they were incurred under a 50-50 split. Certainly, there are ways to do it. It's a matter of whether or not all parties can come into an agreement as to, as to the policy issue on that matter. But we expect to report back to the fire board on February 14th with the options that are available to us to address that particular matter. Of some interest, however, that we also feel that we should report and have done so within the, the staff reports. You might recall in December, we talked about the fact that there, there seemed to be a desire to, to move towards a budget level for the fire district consistent with that which was included within the measure that was before the voters last year. At, at the time in December, when we reported that that was our understanding, there was some feedback that that may not necessarily be the case. At the fire board meeting this month, that issue surfaced once again, and we just feel that, you know, given the fact that mid-year is, is approaching, there are demands being placed upon us for services in a number of different areas, that we wanted the council to be aware that, that there is indeed interest being surfaced at the fire board to move towards a, what was stated as a $12 million target value. We're not entirely clear whether that value is the entire budget in its intent, or whether or not it's the, the cash value of the contribution from each city. If it's the latter, our contribution would be in the neighborhood of 6.2 million, which is approximately a million dollars more than what we're currently paying for those services. At this juncture, we're just bringing that forward for information. We're not asking for any particular action tonight, but would be prepared to address any questions or comments that the city council might have.
Any questions for the city manager?
In the report, you have a couple of, you know, solutions possibly, if we want to go into the 50-50 payback of the liabilities that we incurred when we had that agreement. Cash credit, pension obligation bonds, PERS payment schedule, and some other alternatives. And I was curious to know, your, your either pros and cons in some of these that, that you might be able to speak to, or, or perhaps where you're sort of leaning as far as what you think might be a most expeditious way of doing it?
The easiest solution is to simply recognize the liability as it exists and agree to a payment schedule for those liabilities over a fixed period of time at a 50-50 formula. And if you do that, you can, you can still pay for it through the operations moving forward, and you can pay for it per the new formula, but you would simply give the city of San Carlos, in this case, a credit for the difference between that payment moving forward on a 52.3% or 53% allocation versus what that payment would be on a 50%. I mean, it might equate to anywhere between $50,000 to $80,000 a year, depending upon the timeframe that you agreed to make those payments on the 50-50 basis. That's the easiest and simplest way. It isn't tracking necessarily exactly how PERS might calculate what those payments would be moving forward, because that formula might shift depending upon activity within the, within the organization. The example of the pension obligation bond, though, just verifies how, how easily this can be done if you choose. And what you will do there is you will work with PERS and determine what the obligation for the liability is, and you would participate in raising those funds through an obligation bond, pay off the obligation upfront. You could do that on a 50-50 basis and then pay off the bonds on that 50-50 basis moving forward. That just demonstrates, I mean, there are pros and cons to that particular approach. You're, you're banking on whether or not the market's going to go up or down, and whether or not you're going to be able to get some benefit from that through the PERS organization as the market does vary, and as they participate in that market. But, but it does demonstrate the fact that, that PERS does have a side fund, they have calculated what that obligation is, and they will allow you to pay it off if you choose as a separate debt liability. What we would say is, if, for whatever reason, and, and there are some concerns that have been raised by the finance staff or the department, that pension obligation bonds have a downside, one of which might be that it would take what is an existing liability and, and understood liability, but it would be a, a hard liability, if you will, probably needing to be secured by both the Belmont Fire Protection District as well as the city of San Carlos. And it would be reported as being a hard liability on your books. You may or may not want to, to do that if you're interested in issuing other debt in the near future, but, but it is in fact a liability that we need to recognize. GASB requirements are suggesting that we recognize what it is and start to set aside funding for it in any event. So from our perspective, we know what the liability is. Payment schedules for paying off those liabilities have already been demonstrated. We would think that you should update that. I mean, the, the report that we've, are relying upon, I believe, is a 2004 report now. But certainly, you know what the liability is, you know what the payment schedule could be, you could just simply do a 50-50 split on it and give us a credit for the variation between that 50-50 and what the 5248 formula might, might impose.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Griselli?
I wish I had the answer to everything here.
Wish I had the answer to everything. I can report, just as an aside, that we, the fire board has set up a subcommittee of myself and councilman Phil Mathewson of Belmont, and we'll be meeting tomorrow with the finance director, Thomas Phil, and chief fry to discuss these items among other items. And so we are... And so, we are hopeful to come up with some ideas. We'll be discussing, I'm sure, these as well as other ideas for the funding of the department, and reporting back also on February 14th. It's a difficult issue for some people to identify present or past liabilities relative to this funding formula, and I think that's basically the crux of it. It's approximately, as Mr. Weiss said, about half a million dollars over 13, 14 years. And it's an issue that we're going to have to face up to and figure out how we're going to resolve, because I think it's probably going to be one of the more important items. Excuse me. But I don't have anything at this point to really add, I don't believe. I'd certainly be able to try to answer any questions that my fellow councilmembers would have if they had any.
I do have a question in terms of information coming forward. I know there's some discussion about what the ongoing budget will be, and I noticed a figure of $12 million. I'm not sure what the right number is, but since we are funding out of the operating fund, I think it's important that we get a handle on that fairly quickly, and hopefully over the next three to five years. You know, it may start lower and go higher, it may be flat all the way across, whatever it is, we certainly need to recognize it as a substantial item in the general fund and proceed accordingly. So, the short question is, is that in the mix of things to do?
Well, we are. I don't know if it's going to be in the next month, but hopefully in the next two, three months, we're going to be developing the budget for the fire board with the chief and with our group. And what I'm sure, at least in my mind, what we're going to look at is a myriad of options. Right now, we're in a basic budget mode through June 30th, 2007, with no reserve set up and no extra funds to pay off additional debt. I think the chief, and I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but I'm sure there are ways that you can put together a budget that would be higher than that. There's always a way to put in reserves, and we'd have to study those and see what the number would be. If the number is $12 million in cash, as Manager Weiss said, City Manager Mark Weiss said, then that is, would be, 6.2 million dollars. But if it's $12 million, I believe our budget now is 11.5, I believe. I think that's right, Mark, right?
Yes.
And so, right now, because they're not only funds that we, and you'll say, well, how does that add up? We're only putting in 5.2 times 2 is 10.5. Well, there's funds that come in from other places, hazmat, some other fees and things that come in. So, it all depends on what that final budget is. If we adopt a budget at 11.7, then it's a whole lot lower than 6.2. We adopt a budget at 12 million, then it's a number that would approach that. So, I think it's just a matter now of identifying what we're going to be doing, and we're going to be working on that budget to make sure that we have in there. We want to make sure that the fire department has enough resources to provide proper service to Belmont and San Carlos in the future, just like you said, Mr. Mayor, to plan out a three- to five-year plan to say, okay, this is where we anticipate we're going to be going.
Very good.
I just have another question. That is, has there been much discussion on the fire board about, so we've incurred debt at the 50-50 relationship. Is there not consensus on that that should be paid off at 50-50? I guess I'm just wondering what the conversation's been, and if you're looking for direction tonight, or it's certainly opinion tonight from council on that.
I don't think there's been a consensus on paying that off at a 50-50. I would say there's been discussion on whether it's, depending on how you approach it, if it's, as City Manager Weiss said, and correct me if I'm wrong here, you were at most of those meetings too, Mark, basically, there's a train of thought that they're operating, it's an operating thing, we're paying along the way, so this is operating, it should be under the formula. And then there's the other train of thought that says, well, wait, if we had to go pay them off tomorrow, if we didn't have this organization tomorrow, we'd have to go pay those off, but what would we pay them off in? We'd pay them off in 50-50, because that's how they were generated. So, I think that's the crux of it, in trying to make it as simple as possible to answer your question, but there's not a consensus on, at this point, on how we're going to be handling those, I think. Is that appropriate? No, I think that's perfectly fair. I mean, we danced around the issue a little bit, I think, at the fire board, and the consensus was that the staff should look at the alternatives, that if we chose to go down that path and pay off the liabilities 50-50, that we knew what our options were regarding how we might do that. And so, at the staff level, we've had some internal discussions, and we've set up a meeting with PERS to discuss what options they might have for us in terms of paying off the side fund under different timeframes or with different mechanisms. But beyond that, at some juncture, we're going to have to address the basic issue of whether or not we want to do that or not. And we asked a question at the fire board, at this point, it's like, well, we'll deal with that issue once we know what our options are. And so, we're doing some research, we'll report back to the board on the 14th.
I see the chief back there.
If I may, just, the word unfunded liabilities is out there, and it's this big number that's there, but it is funded. We do fund a piece of that every year within the budget, and so, there is money that is coming out of the operations piece right now, currently, there's funding, funding that component. Our plan is to pay that down in about 11 years or 12 years and have that into a more manageable piece. So, again, as Mr. Weiss stated, you know, this is a conversation we want to have with PERS on Wednesday when we meet with them, but I do want you to know that it is, it is not something that we're sitting out there not dealing with, that, you know, it is in the budget, we are addressing it as best we can based on our activities, and we look, you know, we will be working with the board and both cities to come up with a budget that we can deal with over the next several years to get us where we think we need to be to operate successfully.
Okay. Any other questions? Then we'll accept the report and wait for further information from the board. Thank you. The next item is item 9B, which is consideration and adoption of a three-year sanitary sewer collection system capital improvement plan, Parvies.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the maintenance staff has identified all the main lines and a lot of the laterals that are in need of replacement, and engineering staff has calculated the cost estimate of these projects, and the projects have been listed on a priority list that are included in the staff report on tables 1, 2, and 3 for the next three years. And I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
And so, the money that we've talked about prior tonight will be used to take care of this construction?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And I see that in the first year, we're replacing 13,000 linear feet, about two and a half miles.
About the first year, including the laterals.
Including laterals and the...
About 10,000, right.
Yeah. And then the second year, we'll add another 4,000, and then we'll add another 4,000. Do you think by the end of the third year, we're going to be finished with the job that needs to be done, Parvies?
I think so, because this is really, I've asked the staff for the last three years to come up with the list, and this is really what they have come up with. As you know, there is more to it than this. We have 103 miles of main sewer line, and over the last 18 years, once we construct these, we have replaced 40 miles of 103 miles. And I will say, we are going to be in very good shape.
Okay. Questions for Parvies?
I had just one at least. In your staff report, Mr. Roxari, you have, in paragraph 3, you have the estimates of the budget for $1,800,700 and $1,700.
Yes.
Then in the next paragraph, the cost, $1,505,650 and $600. Do those numbers equate? You're just building, you're thinking that, you're putting in a little bit more, again, reasonable to put in some higher numbers in the budget, and perhaps you think it's going to cost?
Contingencies.
Right, contingencies, that's what I meant.
And escalation.
Yes. So, those numbers, 1.5 equates 1.8, 650 to 7, and 600 to 7. All right. Okay, thank you.
And my question is, is there, what's the primary driver for front-loading this over the three years? In other words, having the primary amount of work and money spent in year one of the three-year project?
These lines have been put on the priorities based on the severity of the defect in the pipe. For some, there are sections of the pipe that almost every month, the maintenance crew has to go out there, cut the roots, rod the lines, and clean it, sometimes on overtime. And these are the locations that people get backup in the sewer line, and during the emergency calls, the staff has to go on emergency and overtime. So, we consider all of this, the roots, broken pipes, and we've seen some of the lines with the camera, broken lines. So, based on the maintenance records, these are, that are driving factors of these have to be replaced.
So, if, just because we obviously have some budget challenges every year, certainly this year, and certainly with the fire amongst other things, do you have priorities within these? Is this listed in priority order if we weren't able to do all of this in the next year?
Well, this, as you know, the sewer funds is not related to the general fund at all. This is just the payers, sewer rate, rate payers are paying, and the reason we're going three years is based on the availability of funds. As I said, this year, from the revenues are collected, we are going to have approximately 1.5, 1.7 million for this year, and next year approximately 700,000, and the following year about 700,000.
So, some may be deferred anyway?
Some may be deferred, exactly.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? So, the staff recommendation is that we adopt a three-year sanitary sewer collection system capital improvement plan as stated. Is there a motion?
So, moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Thank you, Parvies. The next item is item 9C, which is consideration of authorization to issue a request for proposal for preparation of a master plan for parks, open space, buildings, and other recreational facilities. Mr. Weiss, welcome.
Mayor Davis and members of the council, I come before you tonight with a recommendation for authorization to release a request for proposals for a preparation of a parks master plan. As you know, the city council has appropriated the funding in the Fund 27 Park and Lou Fund. The Parks and Recreation Commission has reviewed this master plan proposal, providing input, and their input has been incorporated in the request for proposal. Parks and Recreation does not have a master plan. By accomplishing a master plan, it will do two things. First of all, it will move us forward in a systematic manner to benefit the entire community reflective of the community needs. Second, a master plan can play a role in fundraising, too. As you're well aware, funders recognize an official prioritized need, plus the New Parks and Recreation Foundation will use this as a tool to secure gifts and endowments. And at this point, I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Questions for Barry? I'll just start it off, Barry. I'm somewhat impressed by the brevity of this thing. I would have thought there would have been about 18 pages and a lot of attachments, but it's quite brief. And so, my question is, is everything really included? Like, will we have consideration of a dog park and a sports complex and a swimming pool? And I don't see those items listed as things that we might like to have considered, but will they be considered in the process?
Part of the process, when you send out a request for proposal, is you want to see what the consultant is going to give us for a proposal. You'll notice in there, it does say that they have to include material that's already been developed from Parks and Recreation Commission and from staff, as well as other reports, and in there, it talks about all those specific things you mentioned, plus more. So, those will absolutely be included, because they're already documented.
So, for once in our lifetime, it will be a complete plan, covering everything that's on the table, been on the table, coming to the table, everything we can consider that would be important to this function would be important.
Correct. And at that point, then, part of the process, as noted, it will be a prioritization, identification of costs, as well as identification of potential funding sources.
Right, okay. That's what we want, I believe. Any other questions?
Yep, I have a...
Yes.
Barry, it's just, maybe this is just based on Mike's, for example, Park and Recreation as well, some of the different discussions we've had before council, and that is, it talks about prioritizing future, you know, needs. It's always a sticky one. So, I realize this is a request for a proposal, so it's not the final document yet, but what I thought would, might be important is, under this, on page 7, in submission requirements on item number 3, you talk about having the firm provide information on some of their different expertise in different areas and what experience they've had, related experience. To me, you know, prioritizing additional parks and field space and facilities needed in the future, because we're covering, is it five to 20-year period, I think, is what's in here? It's a heady process, as we sort of all know. I'd be curious as, if that firm, if they have experience in working through prioritization, and what sort of successes or what sort of examples they might be able to also submit at the same time, specifically maybe calling out prioritization methodologies, because, you know, they're so difficult, obviously.
That would be part of their proposal, plus they're required to give us references, and as we check references, we would follow up on that specific question as well as several others.
Right. With the adoption of the foundation, with some of the fields and discussions we have and everything, I just think that that's sort of paramount importance in all of this. Will they also consider, I guess they do a full analysis of things that are also wearing out, whether they're facilities or fields, and how that fits into the general plan, is that right?
Correct. If you look on page 4, at the very top of the page, it actually begins on page 3, I state, at a minimum, the master plan should include the following, and I say, identify and prioritize improvements to existing facilities, then the next bullet point is, identify and prioritize additional that may be needed. So, we're covering both of those.
Yeah, no, that's great. I thought it was nice in that respect as well. Also, I guess, it felt like it was covered in here to me, but I just wanted you maybe speak to, what's the sort of, for lack of a better phrase, schedule of interaction between, you know, once, within the proposal, how do we all work together? And what's the involvement, obviously, of staff and yourself, but also Park and Recreation and council? Will all that be, will they prepare a schedule for that as they prepare the plan?
Yes, they will submit a schedule, and part of the reason that you don't, I could have laid out a schedule, but then I may miss something, and all they're going to do then is respond to the exact data that I gave them. Part of what you want from them is a schedule. We've outlined in general terms what we want, and we'll make sure we get that, but then they may give us something else, too. For example, we say that we want outreach to the community, we want to talk to people that don't use the parks right now as well as those that do. And one of the things we specified is a telephone survey that the city will own, but I want to know what else they're going to come with, because that will tell me which firm to hire. You know, they may want to do surveys at Farmer's Market or Art and Wine Fair or something, and they may have something else, so I want to hear that, too.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
All things considered, when would you expect to receive the final report?
I could only guess, at this point, the, this, everything is due to us. We plan and finalize the contract May 4th. It's going to be a six-month process, so that takes you through December, you know, early next year.
So, early end of this year, early next year is probably when we look forward.
Right. I would think in time for the budget consideration for the next fiscal year, if it could be done quicker, and I'm hedging my bet here, I'm...
I understand, sure.
Yes, sir.
That was my question, Mr. Mayor. Okay.
Anything else? Sorry, one follow-up question. Do they, I believe you've given some service to this, but do they also come up with funding ideas for some of these things, or plans for funding, or way they've seen other communities fund these things?
That's specified in the RFP, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we want that.
All right, then, I think we're ready to authorize issuance of requests for proposal for preparation of a master plan for parks, open space, buildings, and other recreational facilities. Is there a motion?
So, moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. All right, then, next is our study session. This is on natural resources, and as council knows, we have seen the big binder, and we have seen the little binder, and we have seen a lot of stuff on this. So, I would suggest for starters, if we could move along without a staff report at this point, since I think this is all fairly familiar to us, and move into a discussion of the subgroups, and I would suggest that if we have folks here who would like to speak on... And I would suggest that if we have folks here who would like to speak on one of the other of the subgroups, that would be a good place to start. Following that, we'll take general comment from anyone on anything, and then we'll move into discussion of next steps. So if I could start then from the top, our conservation and resource management subgroup, is there someone here who would like to make a presentation? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Emerson from the conservation and resource management subgroup of the natural resources task force. I know you have a lot of materials from us in front of you, so I'm not going to bother going through it in depth or even the short summary, because you've got that, too. I would like to point out that we do have, in our materials, the six major goals within our subgroup that we laid out when we put the report together about six months ago. We also have three important overarching goals that scope over all three of the subgroups. And I wanted to point those out, because one of those is really important to us this evening especially. We point out the need to seek outside resources and collaboration. I think that's important both in terms of developing programs, ideas for programs, and funding opportunities. I think there's a lot going on out there, a lot of resources that are available to cities to set up these types of programs that we've described in the materials, and I think there's, you know, apples out there ready to pick off the tree. Public awareness and involvement is one of the overarching important goals that we identified for each of these categories, subcategories. And then the third is ensuring that the process continues. Out of our subgroup, we've got four people from our subgroup and plus another who's volunteered since the time that we submitted this report, who are really interested in moving this process forward, and who have asked that the city council develop and establish a standing committee, and whether that be on resource, on conservation and resource management specifically, or something that is a slightly broader scope to also include the land, the open space type issues. It is something that we're very interested in, and we are here to offer our services to help out the city and to help out the city council, and so we hope that the city can move forward on that. That being said, I'm not going to provide you additional detail unless you have specific questions about my subgroup's section of the report.
I have one question, Susan. In terms of next steps, there are a lot of items in here, obviously, and they're all well-deserving and need to be considered. Have you folks done any prioritization within this group of how you'd like to start, where you'd like to start, what you'd like to do next?
To some extent. The six goals that we identified are themselves prioritized. I don't want to belittle the establishment of an urban tree canopy, but we put that at the end for a reason. Also, within each of the sections, we described first the policies, very specific policies in some instances, that we thought the city should adopt, and then also programs. I understand, I've just seen very briefly some feedback from staff talking about an interest in incorporating many of these ideas into the general plan revision process. I think that's a great idea, if we can sort of identify several areas that can be addressed in the general plan revision process, and thinking specifically of things like the green building initiatives. I think those are things that can be addressed quite effectively in that context. And then there are also, you know, so many ideas that we put forward. I think to some extent that what is, what the city proceeds with addressing might almost depend on what the staff and the city council is interested in proceeding with addressing, and what any group that is established to try to push things forward is interested in. So to some extent, we prioritize, but also, you know, there's a lot of material to put out there.
Right, thank you. Any questions for Susan?
Not right, not written yet.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We don't go far.
Okay.
We'd like to have you chat with us later on, I'm sure. Okay, let's move to the next item then, which is the report on creeks and watersheds.
Good evening again. Sam Hersberg on the Creek and Wetland Subcommittee. Creeks and wetlands are those places where the water drains from the highest points to the San Francisco Bay in San Carlos. And these are really significant for wildlife corridors, for fish and birds and mammals. And these systems are very dynamic. Creeks don't function like a flood control channel in a straight line. They wiggle around and they move as water peaks and ebbs. And there's been significant degradation that has occurred to our creeks and wetlands in San Carlos over time, and they're largely human impacts. And the reason why is because land development has encroached closer and closer to those creeks, which prohibits their ability to meander. In some cases, creeks are undergrounded. In some cases, we have pollution problems. And you've been made aware of some of our PCB problems, for example, which are not only in our groundwater, but also in our surface water. So we've got a whole myriad of different issues to consider. And what this group tried to do was outline, if the city was to make a commitment to preserve its creeks, wetlands, watersheds, what would be some of the types of things that you could do? And we've been, since the report was prepared, members of that committee have met with the FLOT committee, and there are some members from the committee who are also on the FLOT committee. And I think the FLOT committee's done a good job of trying to prioritize and boil down to five things you could do from the get-go. And you have a copy of that report. And obviously, there's short term and there's long term, and like the prior speaker said, there's also a lot of funding available out there. So I know when the staff, when the staff looked at this report, some of the items when they were reviewing said, boy, that's really expensive. I'm here to tell you, because I work for the county parks, we've been very successful at getting a lot of money through grants by collaborating with others and trying to find solutions, and there's been a lot of private funding as well as public grants. So funding is not always a barrier to solving some of these problems. I'd just like to leave you with a quote that I found, that the only way we're going to live sustainably on earth is learning how to take care of nature right where we live. And what we're really asking the city council is to commit itself to protecting those resources in San Carlos and not relying on a federal or state agency or some other body to do that. And I think if the city was to make a commitment through its policies, ordinances, practices, and training of its staff, working with the community and other jurisdictions, there's a lot of opportunities.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions for Sam? I have one, Sam. In regards to the relationship between your report and the FLOT committee.
Yeah.
Are they addressing certain items in the report that we can kind of assume are being taken care of?
In the FLOT committee report, they in fact quoted the individual line items from that. Create and enforceable riparian ordinance, items 87 and 93. So it's right from the report, and they really tried to figure out how to accomplish multiple goals through some specific boiled-down recommendations.
Okay, very good.
I had one quick question.
Yes.
Excuse me. Do you feel that this area requires more, as you mentioned, you know, regional, you know, the water, as you said, meanders?
Yeah.
It doesn't, it's not just San Carlos?
No.
And so is this, do you feel, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but isn't this one the most complicated of our, what we're discussing in a way? Because we don't control this one? In other words, we don't control the water?
But you know, the city needs to get engaged in the process. I've worked on watershed planning efforts all over the county, in the Pescadero-Butino Creek watershed, in the San Pedro Creek watershed, in the Pillar Citos Creek watershed, in the San Francisco Creek watershed. Talk about complicated. That's two counties, two different flood control districts on either side of the creek, five cities, and Stanford owns a quarter of the property in the whole watershed. And you know what? That effort's been a roundtable of folks getting together and trying to figure out what are the problems, what are the solutions? And they've been, for 10 years now, they've been tackling things one at a time, and really making a lot of progress. Then, because of some of the flooding, for example, that happened in that watershed, they actually institutionalized how they were going to deal with flood control in an environmentally sensitive way. Belmont Creek borders Belmont, Cortoleras Creek borders Redwood City and the county. There's certainly opportunities for collaboration, as well as perhaps with Caltrans.
That's sort of the point I was getting at, is that this one, we are definitely going to, it's not really if, it's we will work together with other people.
That's correct, yeah.
That's the point I was sort of getting at. I just wanted to verify it with you, that this one is a bit more complicated, but yet and all, we have to, you have to start it, I'm not saying you don't, but again, getting together with our neighbors and sitting around in a roundtable and discussing it. Like I said, this one, we can't be arbitrary on our own way, we have to make sure that we're together with our neighbors on all this.
And you certainly have to work with those property owners, public property owners and private property owners who own a portion of the creek, and you're asking them to do things like not encroach on the creek if they have an opportunity. If you adopt, for example, a riparian ordinance, one of the things you could try and do is encourage development away from the creek rather than finding exemptions to allow it closer to the creek. So that, by working with those property owners, you can help them try and accomplish whatever their goals are, but do it in a way that doesn't frankly put their own property at risk from mill due or flooding or degrade the creek in the process. So there's certainly some real win-win situations, but it does require the city council and its staff to be proactive about trying to find problems, trying to work with the community on collaborative solutions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Sam. And the third subcommittee or subgroup is the open space group. Is there someone here that would like to speak to that issue? I see Mr. Friday is coming up.
Good evening. My name is Bob Friday. I am, of course, a city resident. I live on Amber Court. I'm one of four people that ended up on the open space subgroup. There are three of us from that committee here tonight, and I drew the short straw. And so I will just, with your concurrence, go briefly over some of the items that I think are worth taking your time on at this, at this extension of the July hearing when these land use issues were last discussed. And then I've made some copies, copies for each of your council members, and for Barry Weiss, and anyone else who's interested, in about a 10-page document that sort of identifies the issues that, open space issues that we thought were warranted. So of course, our primary effort is to recommend to the city the maximizing of open space. And we believe that, that in that consideration, the city should also include its, other than its incorporated lands, its sphere of influence, which extends beyond the city limits on at least three sides. We believe that, that, and our document, by the way, which I will distribute to you, references the city's general plan and attempts to identify the particular pages and sections in the general plan where we have some issue, or we think it might be wise to make a modification. For instance, we would like to change the use of neighborhood, wherever it may appear, to public recreation for the benefit of the city and its sphere of influence. We think that two and a half acres per thousand population is inadequate and should be expanded to something in the neighborhood of four acres. We think including the El Camino Real and San Carlos Airport as open space areas wherein they are mentioned as such in the general plan is not particularly appropriate, in that those areas, for the most part, are either for transportation purposes or in the open space areas at each ends of the airport, there are areas that are really not available to the public for other uses. We think that annexation of vacant lands where they occur should be emphasized by the city. We believe that conservation easements and other types of easements over private lands should be considered whenever the opportunity presents itself. We think that the city should be concerned about the increase in population, and the increase in population to gain sanitary sewer use, for instance, is an issue that relates to minimizing the amount of open space per capita. We think that every effort should be made to make the open space that is available known to the public. And we think that can be done through documentation to the residents, through signs. We think that particular emphasis should be placed on the preservation of wild and native lands, in order to preserve the native and indigenous species of creeks and the We're interested in seeing issues that are inappropriate on the city's open space and lands made known, issues such as littering, smoking in wild areas, bicycling where that is not allowed, dog walking and our dogs off-leash that's not allowed, and the failure to remove the dog waste. We also think that it would be appropriate to identify, you know, the broad subject of parks and open space. You know, we think that there are different categories, such as city gardens, community gardens, wherein residents might be encouraged or allowed to. residents might be encouraged or allowed to raise vegetables, dog parks and dog play areas and dog walking areas, and then medium-impact areas, such as many of our parks, and then the viewshed areas and open space areas where there's a minimum amount of habitation by city residents. But these are, in general, the sorts of issues that we had identified, and we would like to, as I mentioned earlier, distribute to you some documentation, it's only about 10 pages.
Okay.
And hopefully, you might have time to scan through some of this material, and we'd like to work with the council and with Barry Weiss on these issues.
Why don't you pass that up, Bob? So, do you have copies of it?
Yes, I have, I have copies in hand.
Why don't you pass that up, and then we'll have that in front of us as we proceed with the discussion.
Thank you, fine, Mr. Mayor. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to.
Any questions for Bob?
More of those? You're welcome.
You think we're okay for now?
Thank you.
Stand by.
Appreciate your time.
We do have a number of speaker slips that I'd like to consider at this time. Lynn Mannerman, followed by Bonnie McClure, followed by Suzanne. Suzanne, have you said all you want to say? Thank you. Lynn, and followed by Bonnie.
Lynn Mannerman, San Carlos. Thought I would go through the recommendations that the members of the committee came up with. We went through a process of everybody on the committee having a certain number of votes for the various line items.
Excuse me, Lynn, is this a subcommittee or the full package?
Well, this, the Fluting Land Use and Creeks Committee, on November 30th, submitted its recommendations to you regarding this report.
Okay.
It's a one-page document that lists five recommendations.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I was just saying, the way that we went about discerning our recommendations was everybody voted on the various issues that they thought were either the low-hanging fruit or the high-hanging fruit, ones that we felt you could fairly easily address, or ones that were broader issues that were worth tackling. And we came up with several recommendations, and those were boiled down into five categories. Create an enforceable riparian ordinance, which, not coincidentally, is also one of our charges from you. Provide better public information, and establish a watershed plan, work with neighboring jurisdictions, which also is one of our areas of work, and enhance city staff communication and training around these issues. In terms of the riparian ordinance, as the staff report discusses, there is a general plan update that's coming up, and I am perfectly comfortable coming to our committee with the recommendation that we hold off on our specific riparian ordinance recommendations to you, because the general plan process and result of that process will affect whatever riparian ordinances we come up with. So it seems illogical to spend a lot of work on a riparian ordinance and have that contravene the policies and implementation guidelines in the general plan. And so I've talked with staff about that process, and we feel like fluke can have a meaningful role in that process, and I'd like to try to figure out a way for that to happen. So, in terms of better public information, this is one that we feel is really important. Seven of the eight fluke members live along the creeks, and they all have different interpretations of what the city allows and doesn't allow, in terms of what goes on in their backyards, and I think they're probably indicative of the general population in San Carlos, as far as their understanding of their rights and responsibilities. And so we feel public information is something that is, something that we can make a dent in, in a positive way, and we'll be coming back to you in short order with our suggestion on how to do that, and involving you, hopefully, in that process. Establishing a watershed plan, we made that recommendation in terms of the drainage master plan. It was not taken up, partly because there was an opinion by the Public Works Director that we already had that. Unfortunately, the documents he was referring to were 21 and 24 years old, respectively, and those were engineering studies. We're talking about something different here. We're talking about a plan, as Councilmember Griselli was talking about earlier, that takes into account the complexities of water, in terms of where it comes from and where it goes, but also takes into account the natural resources and land use considerations involved, and this is a complex undertaking. Communities around the country have done it and done it well. It's not rocket science, and it's something that really would enhance this town, and we can talk about that further if you'd like. Working with neighboring jurisdictions, again, it's a complex issue, and we've reached out to our neighboring cities and had conversations with their leadership, and we think that that's an important element, kind of like what Mr. Hertzberg was talking about, it's an important element of a successful natural resources plan, is working with Belmont, the county, and Redwood City. And finally, enhancing staff communication, especially in the area of creeks, where one staff department is responsible for creeks, above the point at which a creek turns from essentially vertical to horizontal, and one staff department is responsible for creeks in the other area. And we feel like, based on our experience and having presentations by the directors of these departments, that communication between them could be significantly enhanced. So, those are the five groupings of our recommendation areas, and we obviously hope that you'll take a close look at those, and the line items, the specific line items are mentioned at the end of each paragraph that's in our recommendation. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to.
Questions for Lynn at this point?
Two members of our committee still here.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
We'll move on to Bonnie. Bonnie McClure.
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. As a citizen that's very interested in the environment of our town and our neighboring area, I wanted to thank everybody that served on this committee. I didn't get involved at all, so I can say, you know, I really am so proud to be a member of this community that can have people come forth and give all that time. You can see hours and hours of time were spent on this presentation, and just the report itself, with all of the references that they've given the city to refer to, it's just, it's like a bible of the environment, and I really encourage you to make use of this wonderful information and this free time these people have given you, and don't let it sit on the shelf, please, use it.
Thank you. And next is Ed, rather, Dick, Ed, mister.
I'm a member of the fluke committee, and I'm also, I live on Carmelita Drive along Pulgas Creek, and as Lynn mentioned, most of the fluke members do live, we have representatives, I think, on each of the major creeks in town, serving on the committee, and we're all participating. I also wanted to take a chance to commend the city staff that's been assisting our committee, particularly our main man, Brian Moore, he's done a great job, and also the planning director, Liz Cullinan, they've been very helpful. We got the staff report this afternoon, I just wanted to say that the staff recommendation to include the creek issues as part of the general plan update makes a lot of sense to me. If you're going to develop a new ordinance, new policies, it's a good idea to have an idea of where you're going, what's your vision. And I think we can all probably have an image of what a creek is in our minds. In an ideal situation, we could probably develop some policies to enhance that creek environment, but the reality on the ground is much more complex, and it's likely that one policy won't fit all, there won't be, sort of, one set of policies won't fit every situation. For instance, just the physical setting of these creeks, the shape of the banks varies a great deal, really, from lot to lot, and the engineering solution that might be appropriate for a sloped bank might not be appropriate for a vertical bank. Most of our creek, all of our creeks go through culverted sections, and when the water comes out of the culvert, out of the pipe, it tends to scour out the sides of the creek at that location, so that's another kind of special situation. The creeks, I think, as Sam mentioned, wiggle, and I know on my property, it makes, the creek makes a 90-degree turn, and then makes another 90-degree turn, so the full force of the water goes against the bank, ricochets off, hits the other bank, and then continues down. That's a different situation, and probably would need a different policy approach. Condition above the bank also varies. In my neighborhood, we have houses, right now, that are up to the edge of the bank, they have no backyard at all, just a deck protruding out over the creek. Others have a backyard that is set up for our normal uses, situations where you can have kids play safely and have neighbors over for a barbecue. And other people have chosen to have very natural settings, park-like settings in their backyard. So you have this variety of conditions, and it's really sort of a visioning task. We can imagine an ideal creek that's in a park-like setting, but what's an ideal healthy creek look like in a built-up urban setting, in all its various conditions? And I don't know what that, I don't know the answer to that question, but it seems that through the general planning process, we could address it.
Thank you very much, and also for your good work on fluke. And next speaker is Heidi, Heidi Serenka.
Hi, good evening again, I'm Heidi Serenka. I just wanted to say two things. One is that I'm involved in a group that's trying to get the Devonshire Canyon area, keep it sort of designated as an open space preserve, and I think some of the members are involved in the city group here, and I think it's really a good idea to be able to work together, if there's other organizations, we're trying to incorporate as a nonprofit organization, so that we can get money to see this happen, and it would be really great to have the city, you know, to be able to work with the city and have the support from the city, so that's one thing. And the other thing is that I just, I think this whole group, this natural resources group, is a really good example of what a bunch of volunteers can do for the city, and it just seems like an amazing amount of work that they've done, and, you know, the expertise and the passion that they're bringing to these problems and issues, and I hope that you'll take a good look at what they've done, and support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the audience? So, let's bring the discussion back here, and decide how we want to proceed. I do think it's helpful to keep the three subgroups in mind as we go through the process, so if we could turn our attention first on the subreport, or the subgroup report from Conservation and Resource Management. Just to start off a general discussion, it seems to me that a number of items presented here are fairly doable, easily doable. We talk about recycling, we talk about having, you know, having containers at the right place at the right time, we talked about encouraging business to do this and that, battery disposal, and so forth. The list goes on and on, and the question is, how do we bring it down to a level of doability over time, starting perhaps with some of the easier, less expensive items, ending it up with those that may be more problematic and may require budget assistance or substantial staff assistance. So, gentlemen, any comment on that?
I guess I sort of echo those comments, it's a, Ms. McClure mentioned tonight that there's been a lot of expertise, a lot of hard work, and there's a great and vast document about a lot of the challenges we have across the city. And as Mayor Davids has outlined, some of this is, how can we get going on a lot of this stuff? Because I think, I mean, maybe it's just my point of view, is that there's a lot of consensus that we need to move forward on a lot of these issues. There's sort of an existing structure in the city, and staff, I think, has been real amenable, whenever we come in with ideas, to say, how can we incorporate this and get this done within the structure that we have in order to make some progress? There's probably also ways that you guys have also identified, ways that we need to look at, either the way things are, how we can enhance the way things are organized in the city, or what department can take on what aspects of these different things. So I don't mean to get too broad here, Mayor Davids, but my, you know, we've, we got the report last year and read through it, there's been a lot of discussions, the fluke committee's doing some great work, the building community's doing some great work, and for me, the primary objective is, how do we divide and conquer and get plans of attack going on these things? I think probably everybody can appreciate that it's sort of vast, and then we have these sort of existing structures, perhaps we need some augmentation to those structures, but staff also supports a number of committees, so we need to sort of say, well, you know, how can we take advantage of this volunteer power we have and keep things moving forward? So, my initial impression was to take these sort of subgroups and actually start to build liaisons with the city and start to break these things down. Director Cullinan's already done adjusting some of these issues in the staff report to say, here's what we can incorporate into the general plan, or what things we need to consider to incorporate into the general plan as we do that. So, I don't have exactly the answer yet, but it's like, how can we get to the place where we can break this down into components and start to make some headway on it?
So, would it be appropriate that you might take a role in leading this group forward to the next step?
Yes.
Somewhat like we did with the building committee process. And I think what the council would like to see is a recitation of items in the report on a timing and can-do basis, you know, leading from perhaps the easier ones on into those that are more difficult, but, so that we can come out actually with a recommendation, saying, this is what we'd like to start with, this is where we'd like to finish it, this is what we want to do in between, and flesh that out. And if you could all do that by the February planning group, that would really be great.
Well, I mean, yeah, without being at all about timeline issues, that's really one of the issues, there's so much here, you know, what can we sort of, what can we feasibly knock off in the next 12 months, what's a larger issue that takes longer planning? So, I guess one of the questions is, the natural resource committee is, is the group prepared to divide and to stay into these subgroups, so one can continue to move forward and try to liaison and try to come up, you know, with city staff and with council to figure out, here are the things that we think we can move forward on? I'm just not sure what the structure is going forward, and maybe we're not going to know that for a while.
Let me take a, let me refer you back to the staff report, where we do have a listing referred by staff, and on page three of that report, the middle paragraph says that of the approximate 170 items that are submitted for consideration, there's a chart attached that shows the city is currently making existing efforts towards approximately 80% of the recommendations, and that's available for our review. There are remaining outstanding issues that need policies and/or other actions, and Liz Cullinan has listed those out as those five. Cullen has listed those out as those five items. These, I think, from a staff standpoint, are items that they need to be resolved, they're policy items. A number of them are general plan items such as developing an open space master plan. I think that's a general plan issue. Establishing creeks, watersheds, policies and programs, another, I believe, a general plan issue. Green building policies and programs, sounds to me to be another general plan issue. And as I say that, I want everyone to understand that our general plan is headed for review and updating this year. And it's going to take a couple of years to get through this process, but during that process, the planners will be seeking the advice of our citizens. And what better advice could they have than that given to them by the open space, by the creek of people, that people who have studied these issues and can bring items into the discussion as far as the general plan. So, bottom line, I think that a lot of what we see here for the creeks, the watershed, and for the open space are issues that can be processed through the general plan review. What we're looking at are the more feet-on-the-ground, hands-in-the-air type stuff about recycling, resource and conservation management. And that, I think, is an area that we can get into. These aren't general plan issues, these are operating issues, these are things that we can do. And these are things that, once we get in and reestablish and reorganize this, we can actually make it a program to move forward with.
So then, it sounds like where you're feeling like, stick with the three subgroups and then try to come away with some sort of practical plans that we can sort of, you know, we can take this as, to start to plan what can be done this year and then how we can incorporate things in the general plan and some cause of, some idea how these things can get done or many of these things may or may not get done, how they're going to get done.
Yeah. But I do think the initial push ought to be in the direction of the Conservation and Resource Management and it should deal with the real issues, the day-by-day issues that we see in front of us. The other things need to be addressed, but they can be addressed over a longer period of time, especially as it relates to general plan.
Right. I guess one of my concerns is that we don't lose the momentum of the work that's been done.
Right.
And I guess one that I had, I mean, what I like about what you're saying is we can sort of identify this one area and start to make some progress in that and I think that that's important. I guess the other thing is, I wonder from the three subgroups, we can come back with, what can we get done this year? Like a work plan for this year, which is something Mr. Weiss has talked about, just as we work with different commissions and committees, just what can we get done in 12 months? And then what are some of the things that need to be incorporated into the general plan? Maybe those two things can live as parallel things, as courses of action right now, you know, for each of the subgroups.
Councilmember Griselli?
Well, Councilmember Lewis has done a great job over there, so, but no, I mean, his points, I mean, the points that I take are, you have to get something done now and you can't lose track of the fact that you've got those open spaces and the repairing corridor and the watershed issues out there that might be related to the general plan a little bit more than, as you say, Mayor David's feet-on-the-ground stuff. You know, the vast amount of paper here and the vast amount of recommendations, and I read them over and it was hard for me to pick out too many that I would just say, can't do, can't do, can't do, can't do. Because most of them you really can do, but again, what timeframe are we going to do it? And relatively speaking, with the resources that we have, with staff and other things. I think, Mr. Weiss, are we going to be discussing this item on our, during our, what do I call it?
Our workshop?
Our workshop, that's it. In February?
Certainly, I mean, the answer is yes. I mean, when we talk about our work program, we talk about the things that are goals and objectives. And any part of this that the city council wishes to put up as an objective is something that will simply identify as who will do what by when. I mean, so it wasn't our intent. I mean, last time we brought this document, provided it to the city council as a, within the packet, as a resource for that meeting. We could do that again if the council wishes so that we can make sure that we've got this document and can pick elements of it for inclusion within the work program and actually have specific tasks, either in a macro sense or picking out a few minor items that we can actually expect to accomplish within the six-month time.
I mean, I guess for myself, I would like to see whether it's the committees or ourselves working with the committees or whomever, sort of identify three to five items in each group and then we can, maybe five to seven items possibly, and then pick three to five or something that, you know, really get into it and try to identify a few things so you can make some progress. Because, I mean, like I said, to me, this is, if you look at this, it can be very overwhelming. And I think there's an awful lot of things in here that we can do, but I think we need, as was said, to identify the ones that we can do fairly quickly within six to 12 months or even sooner than that perhaps. And then others make the plan so that we can, sort of like we did with our, last year when we had our workshop. We identified things that we were going to accomplish and we had benchmarks and we had times and we had people responsible and went from there. And I think, hopefully, we could do a similar situation with some of these items.
It may bear, just for those in the public that aren't familiar with, in our strategic planning process, we come away with hard dates and hard deliverables and then we, you know, at the council meetings, we come back and say, how are we doing against those dates and so forth? So, the nice thing is that we put out things that we think are achievable and they're kind of measurable and we commit to them and we get them done. So, I would wholeheartedly say that we should take this, this document, these subgroups, some that, you know, we've talked about this a couple of times and say, what are those things that we think we can get done strategically in the next 12 months? You know, maybe it's just my producerial background, the only way to get something this comprehensively done is to break into components and just start moving forward on those things. And I feel like there's a lot of consensus on the council to get things moving. And I think from the staff standpoint, and I'm already encouraged to see planning taking on a lot of these issues and say, I think we can accomplish these things. And I think everybody should see that as a really encouraging sign that we're all feeling like we can get in on these things together and start to move them forward. So, I guess, yeah, my two cents is, let's break it down into, here's some of the components. What's important to know is what we're going to get done is what we're not going to get done in the next 12 months, so we know what to concentrate on. And maybe we can help clarify for the Natural Resources Group and the staff departments, here's what we think we can knock off this year and then we can all get together on those. And then this document and the folks that are associated with it will be a huge help in the general plan things because the general plan is just that. It's kind of our divining rags, where we see the community going over the next five to 20 years. And it's all of our jobs to make sure that that's reflective of what we want as a group.
Mr. Weiss, then, would the next decision then to be whether these groups would come up with, as I mentioned, maybe three to five or five to seven of their top items or would we do it going through this document or working in concert with them? I mean, I'm just throwing those out so that when we meet in February at our workshop, we would have these items fairly defined. And that's just my idea. I don't know if that fits the rest of the council's ideas.
Well, I think that, I think that works, although I do think that there's a benefit in having one of us on the council, meet with the group to make sure it gets done. And I think, I hope, there's no real confusion out there as to where the council stands on these issues. We do want to go ahead, but we also need to do with deliberate intent and with budgeting and personnel in mind. So, I think I would favor the idea of one of us reaching down into the subgroup or multiple of us and coming back with a recommendation for the near term as well as for those things that logically fit into the general plan. And if there's any confusion on that then, at least we're represented at the table and we can bring back the message and we could reach for resolution. And we could hopefully do that at the workshop. When I look back to Conservation and Resource, there's more on the table and there's more detail that needs to be gone over. So it involves a little more time. I know Brad is busy at work and I know you're busy at the fire board and I'd be glad to sit with the group and do that as well. I just didn't want to bypass either of you in the process of this assignment.
Well, and also two of us could help, could even go to that and maybe contribute to that. The, in four weeks, we've got our offsite, right? The workshop.
Right.
Offsite. It would be great to come to that workshop with, like Councilmember Griselli said, some sense of, hey, these are things we can put on the worksheet for the next 12 months. If we could, if we can meet between now and the offsite with the group and the group can say, maybe we make the point of those, that early meeting and perhaps you're right, Mayor David, that we start with Conservation and Resource Management, but I would think with the three subgroups, if we could have here things we think are eminently doable in the next 12 months. And then we can take a look at those for, so staff and council can analyze those for our own issues of feasibility and we come away with certainly a 12-month plan while we work on the larger issue, the general plan.
But what would you say then for you and I doubling up and working with the subgroups? I think Bob's got his plate full with the fire and it's fair that we pass some of this around and see what we can do before the, you're not available, I am, or vice versa, we can.
I think that'd be great. Again, it's just the hours of the day for me that are, where we could do it, but I'd be, love to be involved.
Suzanne?
I have a procedural question. The task force, I think, technically expired when we turned in the report in June. So although many of us are here this evening and many from the task force are still interested in proceeding, technically, we don't actually exist right now. So that was why we had suggested, in the report, we had suggested either reinvigorating the existing Sustainable San Carlos, I'm sorry, I don't know the right name for the environmentally-related Sustainable San Carlos Committee that already currently exists or creating a standing committee to address these issues, just because I think technically we don't currently have a task force.
So maybe, Suzanne, we could work that out as we go through the to-do list and get a better feel for how we progress in the future. And currently, you're all volunteers. You never get off the volunteer list, you know.
We just don't know what to call ourselves.
There you go. But we'll take that up as a part of the process, see how it's going to get organized as we move through. Because I believe the planning folks, as we move into general staff, general plan issues, you know, also need to know, you know, what organization are they going to and how are these task forces or any other group going to relate to them. So we need to work that through, but you're right on.
Maybe the creeks and watersheds subgroup can combine with Luke to come up with some priorities for the next 12 months.
Mm-hmm.
See if there's sort of some momentum already there.
Okay. Anyone else who'd like to speak on how we're going? Pro or con? Well, then I think we have consensus that that's how we'll do it. So, why don't I take the lead then with the subgroups, Brad, and see if we can have at least one meeting with the subgroup to talk through the process that we've been through tonight and to get things on the table for the work session. And then to, once more, review those items that need to go to the general plan process and then we'll be in a position, I think, to carry forward. All right? Very good. So ordered. That brings us to item 11, which is adjournment. Thank you very much and thank you for your participation and thank you to all you folks who have spent so many hours on, especially the natural resources. We really appreciate your effort and it's coming home. It's coming home.